We go. Welcome to the fifteenth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please turn your cell phones completely off, even having your cell phone on vibrate will interfere with the tape recording of these proceedings. When addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and to speak into the microphones. Um commissioners, I think we have some minutes to approve.
If I share, make a motion to approve the minutes of the fourth. It is seven twenty four twenty five, fifth seven thirty one twenty five, the sixth. Eight, seven twenty five meetings as well as the regular and executive session minutes. Uh, the eighth, which is August twenty first, two thousand twenty five meeting.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second to approve the regular minutes of the fourth, fifth, sixth. And the regular and executive session minutes of the eighth meeting as previously circulated. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. The minutes are approved. Going on to our regular agenda items, public hearings, calling agenda item number one, application number two, five dash zero, zero, three, zero, two. From Y C Hospitality Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Seth Buckley, authorized agent for the applicant Y C Hospitality Inc.
I'll make a disclosure that I have served on a previous commission with. Uh, Mr. Buckley, um, but this will not affect my ability to be impartial in this matter.
Sir Vice Chair, I'll have the same disclaimer.
Sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to either testify therefore or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioner, is any questions or a form of action?
Then, uh, questions. Motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, three, zero, two, second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, three, zero, two. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two, five dash zero, zero, three, zero, two is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Moving on to calling um agenda item number two, application number two, five dash zero, zero, seven, three, five from I E S. I tell LLC.
Alright, good, good afternoon, Vice Chairman of the Commission, great issue of authorized agent appearing on behalf of. Advocate to my right is Christopher Martinez, whose name I've spelling I've given to the here as reported prior to the start of today's hearing. Also present in the gallery is Albert Chi. Again, I give him the spelling of his name to the here as reported prior to today's, to start today's hearing. Mr. Chi is the Executive Vice President, Mr. Martinez is the Director of Operations for the applicant. Um, we've received the supplemental reports, have no changes there too.
Mr. Vice Chair, a disclosure, since you mentioned L T, I, L T and myself serve on the same Ahoahui Koinoinoi board together. But this relationship will not impact my ability to be impartial in this matter.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this matter was continued from the nine twenty five twenty five meeting. Public hearing was kept open to resolve deficiencies in the affidavit of mailing and the master list. This application has received multiple written protests, zero letters of support. Specifically, total protest received sixty two. Tax parcels within five hundred feet, a hundred and fifteen. Owners unless he's within five hundred feet, hundred and eighty one. Owners unless he's within five hundred feet with qualified protests, two. Total percentage of owners unless he's within five hundred feet protesting license, point zero, one, seven percent. Registered voters within five hundred feet for premises, a hundred and twenty one. Registered voters within five hundred feet with qualified protests, zero. Total percentage of registered voters within five hundred feet protesting license, zero percent. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the seven thirty one twenty five preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner prior to the public hearing.
Okay, so before I open the floor for other individuals that are going to want to testify, we do have someone that has put their name on the list. Uh, Brian Ranky. Please have a seat here. Um, we're gonna have you sworn in and you'll be given a three minute um. Time period.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give at today's hearing will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help me. Three minute timeline will be starting.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and members of the Honolulu Commission. My name is Brian Ranky. I'm the principal at O'Kelly Elementary School.
Hold on. Let it um, let him do his own thing. I'm understanding there might be people that will.
Um, it's a procedural matter, pressure.
Alright.
Mr. Ranky testified at the previous thing. He's had his three minutes, I believe.
So. Okay. Before I continue, we, um. I'm going to rec. Hold on, we haven't, well, we've continued hearings. We have to confirm how we proceed. If someone has already provided testimony. Do they allow, are they allowed with the public hearing kept openly to provide additional testimony? Um, I'm asking that from uh, court counsel.
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna allow him to testify for his three minutes.
Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to proceed with clarification.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Continue.
Thank you again. I'm Brian Ranky, principal at O'Kelly Elementary School. Uh, I come before you again today to renew my testimony in strong opposition of food mart's request for a liquor license at forty nine ninety nine Capelake Parkway. The decision in the application was, the decision was postponed, but the fundamental risk of our students and community have only been clear in the interim. The proposed food mart is located within five hundred feet of both O'Kelly Elementary School and Capelake High School. The commission has a clear and moral professional obligation to protect the health and safety of our students who attend these institutions. The presence of a new school or a new liquor outlet just steps away from where children gather every day, normalizes alcohol access and significantly increases the risk of undergoing. Our underage drinking. This exposure is dangerous to the developing minds affecting their memories, judgment and focus. All of which are essential for academic success and healthy development. We must prioritize creating a safe and alcohol-free zone around our campuses. The last hearing, the question came up of how this food mart is different from the seven eleven across the street. And the differences start especially for our youngest student. The proposed locations is dangerously convenient. The existing seven eleven, though unfortunately another alcohol. Uh, outlet is separated from our campus by six lanes of heavy traffic. That busy road acts as a natural barrier. The food mart, however, is located on the school side of Capelake Parkway. And requires no hazardous street crossing. The proximity makes it a far easier and more immediate target for underage attempts of alcohol use. Uh, furthermore, the existing seven eleven already contends with loitering and unfavorable individuals and non-customers, creating an environment of public disorder. Introducing a second alcohol source, one that is literally adjacent to our campus, will only double the incidences of loitering and public nuisance. Directly compromising the safe and secure peer environment of students and our families. Finally, I must uh, bring to your attention the city and county of Honolulu's significant investment in this area. The Department of Housing and Land Management has provided public land to establish over fifteen hundred affordable housing adjacent from the proposed lot. This maj- massive project is intended to provide stability and opportunity for our disadvantaged families, which I've been in full support of. Placing a new and easily, easily accessible outlet, which serves alcohol directly adjacent to these new housing units will have a profound negative impact on these vulnerable residents. Research shows that neighborhoods with high concentration of liquor outlets near a low income housing experience increase of binge drinking and alcohol-related incidences. We must not create an alcohol saturated environment that undermines the health and well-being and stability of our families that the city is trying to uplift. Granting this license sends a contradictory message compromising the collective goal of creating a safe, healthy and supportive community for our Capelake residents. Uh, in conclusion, the safety of our students, the protection of our disadvantaged families and the integrity of the entire community all point us to a single necessary action. I humbly urge the commission to prioritize the well-being of our children and the public good by denying this application. I appreciate your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Any questions for the testifier before? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I am going to ask if anyone else in the audience that would like to testify therefore or against this application. If you did. Are you in the audience and you are going to testify? You testified previously at our prior um. Open meeting, please let us know because we will continue to confirm that. So again, is there anyone else that would like to testify for this agenda item, application number two, five dash zero, zero, seven, three, five? Seeing none, commissioners, any questions, a form of action?
Uh, Chair. If I may interject, if I could respond, yeah, um. Couple of things. One, one is historically, if you look at the. Well, you know, this is, this outlet is one of many on the island. I mean, the violations are very nominal. We have one where they sort of, I believe they were cited for selling alcohol to a minor back in two thousand nineteen. Since then, there's been nothing. There may a couple of minor infractions about posting signs as well as um. I believe putting up the bad, the placards, you know, warning, um. That is ID check. But to elaborate, there's a hundred percent ID check at every store. Anybody. Who looks under age of thirty or even forty is IDed. They have a scanning system in place. Where possible, the IDs are scanned to verify the validity of the ID. But most importantly, and I found this very interesting. The applicant employs a third party where they have mystery shoppers going in. To check if compliance is being met with checking IDs. I'm, I'm not aware of any other licensee. That does that kind of program. Second, uh, lastly, the managers undergo robust and intensive training in dealing with the homeless in a kind manner. Basically telling them to stay off the property. And if they don't, obviously HPD is called to a situation. You know, the, one of the points that really kind of. Troubled me in the testimony was that, yes, there's a six lane, basically a highway. Between the school and seven eleven. And I've been there. I've been to seven eleven. At eight thirty in the morning on a weekday and I saw the traffic there. People lining up for gas, people lining up to go to uh, set um. Starbucks. And their students, their high school students buy food, alright? So, my thing is, I think. The argument that they have to, I'm kind of concerned whether it's okay for them to cross a six lane basic highway in order to get to a seven eleven. Versus having a convenience store where you can get the same items in, in a rather. A more safe manner. And that's concerning. But again, the, the, this applicant. For lack of a better term, had, they're really concerned with the main issue here. And it is, the main issue is um. Not allowing minors or people under the age of twenty one to purchase alcohol or even obtain alcohol. I mean, managers are trained to watch the parking lot to see if anybody's hanging out. And they're told, you know, they are told to move the people out of the parking lot. You know, they don't want people hanging around. So to answer some of the issues that have been brought forth, I mean, I, I do stress again, this applicant has, has extraordinary. Uh, an extraordinary program in place in which to make sure that underage purchase of alcohol is not made.
I have a question. So as a convenience store, uh, would they still move forward as a convenience store without alcohol?
I would have to defer that to Mr. Martinez to my right. We, we would, yes. But again, you know, you got multiple outlets around that area, you know, that couple area. You've got a food land. Couple of blocks away. You got the seven eleven right across the street. And there'll be more outlets within, I think there are other. Or outlets around in, in that area which I don't know about. I, I don't. Put that in depth in that area, although I'm out there very often, frankly.
Yeah. So, so when I was reading through this, I, on the whole, you know, i- if a business has this. Place to do business and, and they're following all the rules, they should have the right to serve alcohol in that area. And. I, I, I'm speaking for myself, you know, I, we want to make Honolulu a better and easier place to do business. Um, this is a little unique in that it's a green field. There's nothing there yet. And so, um, this is the most amount of protests that I've seen so far. Um, in terms of individual written protests and uh. Now, this is the community saying that this is something that they don't want built there to begin with. And so that, that weighs on my mind as, as we go through this. And certainly, we're not making a decision today, but I just wanted to kind of. Give you the perspective where at least. Yeah.
Oh, we are.
Well.
I thought we had a family issue.
No, no.
I was done. That was the previous hearing.
Wow, okay, then that speech, uh, ready.
The commission may go into an executive session for the following reasons. To consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, provisions, immunities and liabilities. I'll entertain a motion to go into an executive session for the, on this purpose. Um, for agenda item number two.
Uh, making a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Hoi revised statute ninety two dash four subsection ninety two dash five. Subsection A subsection four to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues. On a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, responsibilities, immunities and relating to. The application before the board. So pursuant to revised statute ninety two four subsection ninety two five A and two to consider. Oh, scratch that. So. My motion is to go into executive session. Second, the motion.
It's been moved in second to go into an executive session. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair votes aye. We are now in executive session.
Back from executive session where we were discussing the authority. Given to the commission to grant or deny this license. And while certainly it is within the authority of the commission to grant or deny this license. In our deliberations. A couple of items, right, that we're hearing loud and clear with the. Community is feeling about this in the testimony that was provided and we're thankful for the community to come forward. I apologize for coming late, so I missed the fact that we're actually making a decision here and in that decision. It's also slightly unfair to inhibit one business from another in terms of. One across the street serving alcohol and one perhaps not being able to serve alcohol and so while we. Yeah, somewhat split on this, we would like to ensure in our decision that. The applicant, you know, provides us with the assurances that you provided in testimony today. In terms of the programs that you have in place to ensure that underage minors are not served, being served alcohol. And that you have those protections for the community in place. Commissioners, any other statements?
So I also will make a statement that I think we would like to have you come back within six months to provide to us. On six months, once that license is active, and I think because the building is not built yet. And all of that stuff, right? Once you folks are selling or have opened your business. Six months after that, we'd like you to return to hear what's happening, how things are going. Um, and any, and to also ensure that there is those protections that you voiced and stated in place for us to see.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, seven, three, five, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, seven, three, five. Any nays or aye? The chair will vote with reservations. Any other nays?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have Mr. Martinez come and maybe give a six month. Update for us on the programs that you put in place should the license be approved today, if that's okay.
Yeah, so with that stipulation.
With that stipulation.
The application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, calling agenda item number three, application number two, five dash zero, zero, eight, zero, nine, Paradise Ciders LLC.
Hello. Owner representing Paradise Ciders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests. Zero letters to support applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the eight twenty-one twenty-five preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Moon prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to testify for or against this applicant? Okay, seeing none, commissioners, questions?
I have no question, no questions.
Motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, eight, zero, nine, second.
Then moved and seconded to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, eight, zero, nine. Any nays or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number four, application number two, five dash zero, one, two, four, eight. Ahmed Tarasu LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole. On behalf of the applicant, person to my right is owner, Mr. Hideo. Oh, my, we have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the eight twenty-one twenty-five prelim hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Moon prior to the public hearing.
Okay, is there anyone here who'd like to testify either for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
I have no questions.
Motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, one, two, four, eight, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five dash zero, one, two, four, eight. Any nays or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number five, application number two, five dash zero, one, three, six, nine, Cars and Brew LLC.
Good evening, Chairman Hong and Commissioners, Zachary Diano, Z A C H A R Y D I capital I O N N O. Counsel on behalf of Cars and Brews. To my right is one of the owners of Brandon Cruz. We have no questions or changes to the investigative.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the eight twenty-one twenty-five prelim hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Moon prior to the public hearing.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to testify therefore against this applicant? Right, seeing none, commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions.
Motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, one, three, six, nine, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five dash zero, one, three, six, nine. Any nays or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, application number two, six dash zero, zero, four, six, five, dash one. The two, six dash zero, zero, four, six, five, dash one, two, two, TPOK Liquor LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Travis Quahara for the applicant TPOK Liquor LLC. Uh, the applicant is requesting a continuance of this matter to November sixth. Uh, the reason for the request is the applicant needs additional time to finalize its liquor service plans.
Okay.
Not seen.
Yeah.
Gotcha, no match. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number seven. Application number two, six dash zero, zero, five, three, eight, dash one, two, six dash zero, zero, five, three, eight, dash one, two, two. Nonas Hawaii LLC. Hello.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair members of the Commission, Greg, Michelle, appearing on behalf of the applicant, we have received the investigator's report, but no changes there too.
There's any question?
No question. Motion to approve application number two, six dash zero, zero, five, three, eight, dash one, two. Two, six dash zero, zero, five, three, eight, dash one, two, two, inclusive, check out.
So it moved and seconded to approve application number two, six dash zero, zero, five, three, eight, dash one. To two, six dash zero, zero, five, three, eight, dash one, two, two. Inclusive, any nays or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the application is approved. You, calling agenda item number eight, application number two, six dash zero, zero, five, five, one, dash one. To two, six dash zero, zero, five, five, one, dash five, two, Waikiki Turtle Snuggle LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair members, Commissioner Greg, Michelle appearing on behalf of the applicant. Um, we have received the investigator's report, have no changes there too. We do have some comments, the cushion is interesting hearing that, but I'll think that.
Okay, let's hear your comments.
Um, you know, we understand objections, some concerns raised by the. Licensing investigator. Basically, we're applying for the special license to take advantage of the temporary relief program set up by the city. I, it is a permanent, well, excuse me, a permanent tour cruise vessel application. Has been applied, filed rather, and the vessel is a premises. It will be the license premises per se, albeit, albeit it'll be on the water. No, no alcohol will be served while the ship is docked or in port. Mr. Krantz will do the fingerprinting before our license is issued. The neighborhood board was not notified. There's no neighborhood board in the area outside of Kiwala Harbor, obviously, so couldn't give the neighborhood board any notice. Therefore, also therefore zoning clearance was not obtained. The open ocean outside of Kiwala Harbor is outside of the Kaka Kamaka area, which is under the HCTA jurisdiction. Um, but we're kind of approaching it that the vessel is a building per se. To make it kind of. Constructively use of the temporary relief program.
So how, okay, so you're basically saying you're going to consider a ship or a vessel a building. But yet you're going to serve alcohol out on the water. Um, how are our investigators to enter a building that's not a building, that's a ship out on the water? To investigate whether or not you are or not following the exact policies and procedures. Based by this specific type of license. I do understand you're out there to work on getting some type of, um. Concession in regards to the long term of how long it takes to get a license. I get that, but I also look at it as. A way of circumventing the actual category of a license in my, in my view, just me personally. I'm not talking for anybody else.
I understand your concern, Vice Chair. Previously, I, I've dealt with this about. Thirteen years ago. The situation when you deal with a vessel is the investigators come dockside, they go on the vessel. And they go out into the open ocean. Okay, and I'm serious, that's what the answer is. If they get seasick, the ship is not coming back. I mean, the vessel is not coming back. But to answer your question, that, that is what realistically, that is what the, the procedure was.
Okay, so the procedure thirteen years ago was that, but was that for a vessel that was licensed under a cruise vessel? Because obviously we wouldn't be coming up with this on a, on a situation where it's. First time we're talking about something like this. Because if it was a cruise vessel, then I can see, right? You might not have that same question that I was asking in regards to being a cruise vessel license, right? Because we know that's what a cruise vessel license is. You're gonna go out there and if you're gonna check it, you're gonna ride with it, but. So, I mean.
No, I, I understand what you're saying.
I'm just stating.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Vice Chair. Um, I mean, this is another approach to the situation, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
And, and it is true, it is a vessel, right? But again, if, you know, before the vessel leaves harbor, we were on a schedule. Investigators, investigators, enforcement investigators, well known when the ship is leaving port. They can come dockside and, and board the vessel and make sure. I mean, that's how the procedure would be, you know.
But then what, what's the fundamental difference between? A liquor license that is for a cruise vessel and always having a special license for any event of the cruise vessel?
I, I don't.
Wouldn't, why, why wouldn't you just always get a special, a special license for a cruise vessel whenever. You know, cruise vessel wanted to serve alcohol.
Well, um, I, I know that in this situation, it's not, we're not really looking at a special license in the terms of. Once, you know, we, we get the license, we'll be serving alcohol dockside. You know, I'm saying, well, we're trying to, I, again, it's a novel approach. We're trying to craft it so that. We're outside on the ocean and then that's the only place we'll assert alcohol. You know what I'm saying? That will, you know, basically, I, I think you're, you've got a captive audience at that point, right, on, on the vessel, correct? If I, correct if I'm wrong, but again. We're, we're just trying to look at it. Some kind of relief for, for the applicant under the current situation that we have before us.
Okay, so counsel. If you're docked, are you going to be serving alcohol?
No, clearly no, no.
And so once you part, depart from the, from the dock or the port. At what point would you be serving alcohol?
Once you pass, probably when in the open ocean.
So is there a?
As soon as you exit the harbor, that's a Tokyo elevation. I, I'm sure if you want to see like the second buoy out there. I think they'll open it up because that's, that's a part of the problem is exiting.
So correct me if I'm wrong, is there a three mile limit international waters where you don't have to get a license at all and you can serve whatever you want?
Yeah, I don't think they go that far out.
Okay, so you'd be serving on a mobile thing, right? And, you know, Vice Chair brings up a good point as far as investigators. Checking for compliance, right? Um, so that would pose a quandary for me and maybe some of the rest of the board members as well. Because if we grant the license, how are we supposed to monitor compliance with it?
Again, if freedom, like, like if it was a tour cruise vessel. You come to outside and you'd have to board the vessel.
But practically speaking, if they're gonna spend that much time on the ocean. Taking them away from their other inspection duties, that poses a major problem for us.
Well, that would be also for a tour, tour vessel. I mean, you'd have to go on the ocean anyway. Enforcement, so there's no difference there really. Procedure, I see no difference. Um, you know, as far as the investigating.
Well, you know, you stated that you're looking at a novel approach and I think the more novel approach. Creates certain ambiguities and questions that make it difficult for the board to rule.
I really can't say that. I, I, I think we pretty much said it out that they won't serve alcohol while they're in port. As soon as, let's say they leave the second buoy.
But I think you said yourself that you're taking a novel approach on this, did you not?
Right, because there, you're talking about it being a, a basically a standalone premise of, of brick and mortar building versus a vessel. But I think there are certain. Procedures in place. I mean, you know, that we can basically, I think it runs together.
Okay, so for the record, could we have supervisor Sato take the stand?
Supervising investigator, Daniel.
Supervising investigator, Daniel Sato.
So, Mr. Sato, what would be your concerns from the licensing side?
Well, um, I'm gonna start by reading the law if that's what they did. So under H R S two eighty one one, we have a definition for premises, which basically what Mr. Nishio said was brick and mortar, an establishment inside of like a retail store type situation. And when I go to the special license category, under two eighty one thirty one. It clearly says liquor sold under class ten shall be consumed on the premises. Where he's parking this um class ten special is a vessel. And under H R S two eighty one thirty one, vessels are strictly under a transit vessel, class eight or a class nine. There is no premises for a vessel and it's on its own under the law. So I can't, I I guess read that special to be put on a vessel. Cause the vessel is gonna be a basically a moving target. And the law, oh. The under especially, you can't put it on a vessel. A premises only.
Thank you for the clarification. You first.
So. I'm gonna make a motion that permission may go into an executive session for the following reasons. Present to Hawaii revised statute section nine two dash four and subsection nine two dash five A four to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues in a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities are related to agenda item number eight.
Second.
Any nasal reservation, seeing none, we are in executive session. Okay, um, so we're back in executive session where we discuss with council the appropriateness uh, applying the special license to a cruise for um vessel. Um, and in our discussion, we uh do not find that it's appropriate, an appropriate use of the special license for this.
Sure, if I may interject in um, in talking this over with investigators and you know the tangential issues involved, we'd probably at this point move to withdraw the request.
Okay.
I think that'll be the best uh choice to proceed for the overall application. But I, but I thank the commissions, at least considering the matter. I mean, we're, we're trying to address the issue with the current situation. Cause it's, it's gonna take one year to get our, for applicant to get its permanent license. So we are, we are there trying to to address these issues as best we can. So, you know, no purchase to uh should be to our client, but you know, again. But again, we do appreciate the commissions considering the matter and the questions posed and they're valid questions.
We need to take action.
Yeah, we have to.
Uh, motion to approve the withdrawal of applications number two six zero zero five five one dash one two, two six zero zero five five one dash five two inclusive.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to withdraw application number two six dash zero zero five five one dash one to two six dash zero zero five five one dash five two inclusive. Any nasal reservations seeing none, the application was withdrawn.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Calling agenda item number nine, applications number two six dash zero zero six four five, your event solution LLC.
Mister Chair Commissioners, um, with respect to agenda item number nine, applicant has requested that the matter be rescheduled for the ten thirty meeting.
Oh, okay, sounds good, thank you. Calling agenda item number ten, applications number two six dash zero zero six six one dash one to two six dash zero six six one dash one six National Guard Conference Corporation of Hawaii. Hello.
Hello again.
Right.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chairman members of the Commission, great Nishio coauthorization appearing on behalf of the husband. I do have three more after this, by the way.
Okay.
Uh, again, we have received investigator's report and have no changes there too. It's the same series of specials from the National Guard Conference Corporation.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
My motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero six six one dash one two, two six zero zero six six one dash one six inclusive.
Second. Then moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero six six one dash one to two six dash zero zero six six one dash one six inclusive, any nasal reservations. Seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you.
See you in a little bit. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number two six dash zero zero six eight eight, Y U Symphony Association. Hello.
Hello, Chairs and Commissioners, I'm Randy Wong, R A N D Y W O N G, uh, President and CEO of Y U.
Can you walk us through your event?
Uh, yeah, sure. It's a uh, it's a special gala fundraiser called Himakanaona Melody, the gift of music. It raises funds for our vision uh to make uh music a right in Hawaii, cause there's not enough music education. And so there's a uh, there's a uh, uh, performance by our Youth Symphony One Orchestra uh, in the courtyard of Holly Colony. And then a silent auction uh adjacent in the garden, uh, the garden terrace room. And then after they perform, then they go upstairs to the ballroom. Uh, we have a three course dinner and a uh, another performance.
Okay.
Missus, questions?
A question.
No questions.
No questions. Up, motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero six eight eight, second.
So it moved and seconded to prove application number two six dash zero zero six eight eight. Any nasal reservations seeing none, I ask both I, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twelve, application number two six dash zero zero six eight nine, Mana Up Foundation, hello.
Hello, Chair Commissioners and members of the liquor commissioner, liquor commission. My name is Javan Kai Amma, J A V A N K A I A M A, and I am the authorized agent for Mana Up Foundation. Yeah, we're part of a special event license, yeah.
Yeah, you wanna walk us through your event?
Uh, so Mana Up is a foundation that's been doing this since uh two thousand fifteen. They uh support entrepreneurship in Hawaii. Uh, they take on local businesses and then they kind of uh let them through programs, help them become successful. Then they graduate, uh, this graduation, these vendors are able to sell their items at uh now the location is Bloomingdale's. And it's kind of like a sip and shop.
Okay.
Kind of thing, yeah. And all proceeds go to the foundation to help entrepreneurship.
And how are you gonna delineate the drinking area?
Uh, we have ten, uh, ten security, we're licensed, uh, will be, everyone will be banded.
You have stanchions.
Yeah, oh yes.
That, that was my question.
Oh, sorry.
Good answer, both good answers.
Been doing this for a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
No questions.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero six eight nine.
Second. Then moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero six eight nine. Any nasal reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Calling agenda item number thirteen, applications number two six dash zero zero six nine three dash one to two six dash zero zero six nine three dash three four, uh, Ichiriki Kalivi LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is authorized agent, Mr. Bryson Afong. Spelled B R I C Y N, last name Afong, A F O N G. Um, this is a special event license we are requesting while we're pending the temporary liquor license and permanent liquor license. Um, as an update to the missing report, we did provide with the liquor commission the notification to then the neighborhood board on October sixth.
Any questions?
So, only thing I will say is, I don't know if it's just the uploading process, but exhibit A. There is like really no delineation of what the floor plan looks like, so if we can at least make sure we get something to uh, I finish, unless somebody else can see, so I can see. To our dish unless somebody else can see that I can see one red line in the very top. But that's about it, but it's not gonna stop me from approving anything, but if it gets approved, I'm just saying we would need one sent to administration.
I know that copies always don't turn out well, but we actually do submit a really nice clear copy of the Commissioner's Xerox copies maybe just.
Alright. Okay.
Okay.
Right, motion to approve applications number two six dash zero zero six nine three dash one two, two six dash zero zero six nine three. Dash three four inclusive.
Second. So moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero six nine three dash one to two six dash zero zero six nine three dash three four. Any nasal reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Okay, which commission?
Thank you. Calling agenda item number fourteen, application number two six dash zero zero seven zero one, Kuakini Foundation.
Hello. Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Brian Nagamine, B R I A N, N A G A M I N E. Representing authorizing for the Kuakini Foundation.
And can you walk us through your event?
Sure. So this is a gala that we've been having for the past twenty years. This year we're celebrating one hundred twenty fifth anniversary. The Kuakini Fund system is, the foundation is a subsidiary under that, a five one C three nonprofit organization that raises funds. For company improvements and whatnot for the hospital. So our gala is gonna be at the Hilton Hawaiian Village. It's a gala with a dinner, entertainment, silent auction involved. And not sure what else you.
Mission. That's gonna it?
Yeah.
Missus Questions?
Is this all in-house security or are you providing security?
In-house security. Yeah, and and. It's all the, I'll call it is through a silent auction, so it's the winners are given their prizes at the end of the night as they're leaving. I think it's.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven zero one, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven zero one, any nasal reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number two six dash zero zero seven zero five dash one, two two six dash zero zero seven zero five dash three zero. Roland Reyes.
Hi, my name is Roland Reyes, VBA Hawaii shop. Just out applications to extend our temporary.
Questions? Right.
Click. Motion to approve application numbers two six dash zero zero seven zero one dash one two, two six dash zero zero seven zero five dash three zero inclusive, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve applications number two six dash zero zero seven zero five dash one. The two six dash zero zero seven zero five dash three zero, any names of reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number sixteen, application number two six dash zero seven one zero, Foundation of Marindale School.
Mister Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself. I am a current board member of the foundation.
Right.
Hello, my name is Bud Lauer. I am the Executive Director for the Foundation for Marindale School. My spelling is B U D D L A U E R. We are holding our annual noblesse oblige scholarship dinner at Sheraton. This weekend, so we have about three hundred fifty to four hundred in attendance for that event. There will be twenty students performing at that event. But we do have adult chaperones and teachers, so they'll be able to identify those students and to make sure that they are not. Provided any liquor at the event. They will have in-house security and it is this. Cash bar and then also the wine pool for the silent auction.
Chair, before we continue, I'll make a disclosure that I'm an alumnus of Marindale Schools, but this will not affect my ability to. I shall spatter.
Represent. We lost one more, then you'd be in trouble.
So even though there will be chaperones, will you be ID checking?
Yeah, we'll do ID check, wristbands, everything as usual.
And one other question, what can you re-pronounce the name of the event and what it means?
Noblesse Oblige Dinner. So it's kind of Latin. It means to whom much is given, much is expected.
Okay, thanks. I I've heard that term before. I just A didn't know how to say it or B didn't know what it meant. So thank you.
Right, motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven one zero, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven one zero, any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, application number two six dash zero zero seven one four, Ronald McDonald House Charities of Hawaii Inc.
Hello, good afternoon Vice Chair and members of the liquor commission. I'm here on behalf of Ronald McDonald House Charities. We help children and their families who are on Oahu to seek medical services on Oahu. We're holding our Hope and Heroes Gala on November twenty second. I am the Special Events Manager. The license is for our silent auction and the bar will be run by Aloha Hulani's license. It'll be a dinner auction and the entertainment.
Mister Chair, before we continue, I will make a disclosure that the ILWU does represent the employees at Aloha Hulani Resort Waikiki Beach. I'm not their direct representative. But this will not affect my ability to be impartial in this manner.
Okay, so noted. Right. Any question?
Oh, did you state your name for the record?
Zara Bagasol. I think my boss's name is on there, but I sent in the.
Do you have the spelling?
Uh, zero.
Okay, you're working.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
No questions.
No.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven one four, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven one four, any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eighteen, application number two six dash zero zero seven one five, Health Care Association of Hawaii.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Wendy Odo with the Healthcare Association of Hawaii, W E N D Y and last name Odo, O D O. To my right, I have Stacy Wong. She is our my colleague and director of our event that we are here for.
And can we walk us through your event?
Sure, Stacy, you went to that.
Yes, this is the H A H Awards and Scholarship Gala. We are expecting about four hundred and fifty people. There is a dinner and silent auction, which raises money for healthcare scholarships. And then there's a speaking program where we recognize the award recipients and scholarship recipients.
Missus Questions?
Questions. I have no questions.
Well, just quickly, this is gonna be no host type cocktail serving. And then any liquor on the silent auction will be released after.
Yes, the people who are the successful bidders pick up the liquor at the end of the night and they do not consume it on the premise.
Okay, thank you. Good. Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven one five, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number CH six dash zero zero seven one five, any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number nineteen, application number two five, two six dash zero zero seven four one, Congregation of Christian Brothers of Hawaii. Oh.
Aloha, I'm Pua Higa, P U A H I G A, and to my right is our Director of Facilities, Guy Lancaster. I'm the principal for Damon Memorial School, which is the DBA for the Congregation of Christian Brothers.
Okay, can you walk us through your event?
Okay, on November first, we will be having our event called the Backyard Paeina. It is a fundraiser for our multipurpose field. We are a private school and we will be having. A area that will be blocked off for those who are twenty one or older. We have a mandatory ID check. Risk banning program and we are also having double barriers to delineate between the. Designated alcohol area and the under twenty one non-drinking.
Miss.
How many special duty officers will you be having?
We have fifteen special duty officers and thirty extra bodies that will be spotters for the.
Thank you.
No questions.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven four one, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven four one, any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty, application number two six dash zero zero seven four seven, Saint Louis.
Aloha Commissioners. My name is Richard Gonzalez with Saint Louis School, R I C H A R D G O N S A L V E S. The event is called the Palai Pohaku Alumni Paeina. It's being held on Saturday, November eighth at Saint Louis School in the Charesty teaching athletics complex. Purpose of the event is to provide proceeds from the event, provide scholarships and financial aid for students.
Corporate twenty one event?
Only, yeah, twenty one and over, yeah.
Okay.
Right, motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven four seven, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven four seven, any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty one, application number two six dash zero zero seven five five, I can, I will Hawaii. Hello.
Good afternoon Chairs, good afternoon Chair, good afternoon Commissioners. This is for the Aloha to Aloha Stadium Concert happening on October twenty fifth at the stadium park.
You state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jason Park, J A S O N P A R K, President, I can at Hawaii. So this show is the Aloha to Aloha Stadium Concert. It is gonna be at the stadium parking lot. We will have separate areas for twenty one and over and separate areas for those under twenty one. There'll be six eight foot barricades separating both. We'll have wristbands. We have ten special duty HPD, also thirty private security. And I would like to answer any questions you guys have.
Are are those areas adjacent to each other? That they're designated areas? They're separated?
They're separated.
By space?
By space, yeah, six to eight feet barricades.
It'd be huge.
Yeah, last one, last one, last one. No questions.
No questions.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven five five, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven five five, any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty two, application number two six dash zero zero seven seven one, the two six dash zero zero seven seven one dash nine. Hawaii A G and Culinary Alliance.
Good afternoon, I'm Denise Yamaguchi, D E N I S P Y A M A G U C H I. I am the CEO of the Hawaii Ag and Culinary Alliance, DBA Hawaii Food and Wine Festival. The first application is for a online auction. It runs twenty five days. The auction, at the end of the auction, the items will will be picked up at our office in a specific location.
Okay. Questions? Definitely no delivery of of items, right? It's all pickup.
So on the pickup, you'll be IDing and ascertaining that they're twenty one and over?
Yes, and it's the events and the auction have clearly marked that it has to be twenty one.
Alright, thank you. Good. Motion to approve application numbers two six dash zero zero seven seven one dash one two, two six. Dash zero zero seven seven one dash nine inclusive, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven seven one dash one, two six dash zero zero seven seven one dash nine. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Calling out of order, application number twenty four, application number two six dash zero zero seven eight seven, Hawaii Ag and Culinary Alliance.
Okay, um, this is for the fifteenth annual Hawaii Food and Wine Festival, our Aloha Hulani event called Slanted and Fantastic Tribute to Charles Fan. We have chefs.
I think, sorry to cut you off, but item number twenty four, I think is the Aloha Hulani one or on the one that is for the convention center.
Well, I'm sorry.
Number twenty three, am I correct?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Chair called.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Now your fault.
Yes. I was reading twenty two.
I was like, wait.
Calling back, agenda item twenty three, application number two six.
Okay.
Dash zero zero seven eight six, Hawaii Ag and Culinary Alliance.
Since you come late.
It's been a, it's been a tough, tough few weeks.
Again, this is the fifteenth annual, part of the Hawaii Food and Wine Festival's fifteenth annual. This event is our largest event. It's at the Hawaii Convention Center. We're expecting about a thousand people. We have. Convention Center security, we have H five HPD, two HPD officers, and we've also hired separate security, I think it's hybrid security, five, five officers. Everything is twenty one years and up. We have everyone wrist banded. It's in a specific location. If I can answer any other questions.
You've done this before.
Yeah.
Right, motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven eight six, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven eight six, any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty four, application number two six dash zero zero seven eight seven, Hawaii Ag and Culinary Alliance.
This is another Hawaii Food and Wine Festival event held at the Aloha Hulani. We're expecting seven hundred fifty people. We've hired four. Security officers in addition to hotel security and we've hired two HPD's officers. Everybody will be wrist banded. And areas that are not, our area will be sanctioned off so that there is the markation as to what's our event and what's not, what's the hotel event. What the hotel property is, I'm sorry.
So Chair, I'll make a disclosure, the LWU represents the employees at the Aloha Hulani Resort. I am not their direct representative and this will not be, this will not affect my ability to be impartial in this matter.
Yes, I noted. Right, no questions.
Yeah, I'm.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven eight seven, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven eight seven, any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty five, application number two six dash zero zero seven nine four dash one, to two six dash zero zero seven nine four dash three zero. V S E Capital Grill, Waikiki.
Good afternoon Chair Commissioners, Devin De Colby here representing V S E Capital Grill. To my right is Deborah Espino, E S P I N O. She's the VP of Business Development. And this is, we're in the midst of getting our license. It is a new application. And because there's no license there, this is kind of our only option.
You got it. Okay.
Wish we could apply for that, the break on the fee, but I understand.
Okay. Yeah, no questions.
I have no questions.
That motion to prove applications numbers two six dash zero zero seven nine four dash one, two, two six dash zero zero seven. Nine four dash three zero inclusive, second.
So moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero seven nine four dash one, to two six dash zero zero seven nine four dash three one inclusive. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Calling.
You have a lot of water.
Yeah, calling out of order, agenda item number thirty nine. Request number two six dash zero zero seven three. Request number two six dash zero zero seven three one, Vintage Barber Shop Hawaii LLC.
Thank you very much, Chair Commissioners, Devin de Colby here for Vintage Barber Shop LLC, uh to my right is Mr. Aaron Fune, F U N E. Is the owner operator of Vintage Barber Shop, we appreciate you taking us out of order, um Mr. Fune is actually an active. Owner, so yes, he has to give back that, that's, yeah, so. Get that done, um basically what happened was, um, I called him about three weeks ago, and I said, how's the. Business going, and he said, we haven't even opened yet, uh and I didn't understand, and um Mr. Fune, I think, wanted to explain exactly what was going on. With the building, because it's not actually his fault, it's actually the building.
So basically, the landlord hasn't provided power for my unit yet, so I'm still waiting on that, and I'm hoping by next month, we should have power. But, yeah, we haven't been open for over a year now, and at least, yeah. Because of that.
Okay, so that kind of answers my question, none of the day, none of the days that were started on six twenty five, twenty twenty five. Um, were used yet.
Yeah, they haven't used any, I mean, in fact, actually, if it's going according to the plan that he has, we're going into the extension. And it's still probably not gonna be open, because they said that transformer probably won't be done for like another month, so it's really kind of awful.
So it's like, we don't even have power to even see if the things work yet, so, yeah.
Okay, alright, and and so the.
Want to change the dates to October twenty third, twenty twenty five to February nineteenth, twenty twenty six, instead of the current ones that we approved, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, and are you sure, like, you don't want to move it even further?
You know, I can't, I can't afford.
Yeah, honestly, i- it's a, it's sort of a, uh, they're not sure when it's going to be done. So it could be like a couple of weeks and it could be a month from now, I think he's taking a.
So, they told me that the transformer should be coming in next week Monday, and then the install will happen, and after that, I could finish up, I renovated the place. But we couldn't run any power in that place, so we get the transformer.
Okay.
Okay.
There's an offsite question, you paying monthly lease rent on that?
They finally cut me a break.
Wow, yeah, okay, so, um, certainly, uh. We're in time to grant this, but uh come back if you're, if this doesn't work out.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Alright, motion to approve, request number two six dash zero zero seven three one, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, request number two six dash zero zero seven three one, any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the questions. Thank you so much, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, now. Yeah. Calling agenda item number twenty six, transfer application number two five dash zero zero nine nine two, Ganga and Omrit LLC. Did I say that correctly?
Good afternoon, my name is Mary Ferreira, M A R Y F E R R E I R A. On behalf of Ganga and Omrit LLC, to my right is Mr. Omrit Shrestha. Man, manager.
Right, Commissioner's question.
There is no changes to the investigation.
No questions.
Alright, motion to approve, transfer application number two five dash zero zero nine nine two, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two five dash zero zero nine nine two from preliminary hearing. Uh, any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the uh applications.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, calling agenda item number twenty seven, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero seven seven. Aloha beer, hello.
Well, again. Nope.
Oh, God.
Alright, I bring you show authorization, appearing on behalf of applicant, we have received investigator's report and no changes there too.
Commissioners and questions?
No questions.
I have no questions.
Motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero seven seven, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve that transfer application number two five dash zero one zero seven seven. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty eight, transfer application number two five dash zero one seven one six, Royal Village Investment Inc.
Triple back.
Alright. Calling agenda item number twenty nine, application number two four dash zero one nine nine nine, D D H two Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant, present to my right is President Mr. Yohei, spelled Y O H E I. Takahashi, um we'd like a correction to the investigator report, um she says category one. Restaurant should be category two restaurant with entertainment.
But that's what the application was, just the investigator reports.
Yeah, so, I think, I think we might have to make a motion to amend the posted agenda. Since there's five of us, we do have the ability to do that, correct?
So this is a typo error, that's.
Or error by the investigator with with the investigator.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve, I'm making a motion to approve. Uh, application number two four dash zero one nine 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 from category one to a category two.
Check it. It's been moved and seconded to amend agenda item number twenty nine, application number two four dash zero one nine nine nine. From a category one to a category two license, any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote I, the agenda is amended, okay, now on to the substance.
I have no question, alright.
Okay, motion to prove application number two four dash zero one nine nine nine, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two four dash zero one nine 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 as amended. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved for public hearing.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty, application number two five dash zero zero eight nine four, Ida Shaima Say LLC.
The Chief Chair.
Alright.
Member of the Commission. Authorization appear on behalf of applicant, we receive the rest is the no changes there too.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero zero eight nine four, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero zero eight nine four for public hearing, any needs or reservations seeing none. I also vote I, the applications.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty one, application number two five dash zero one three eight five, Hongqing Hot Pot, Waikiki, so.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman Members of Commission, Kei Keiuchi. For the applicant, we have no changes um for additions to investigator's report, however, we do request. The public hearing be held in seven weeks instead of eight weeks, which would make it December four.
Okay. Um, can we accommodate that with help?
We've seen this.
Okay, alright.
No questions.
Okay, motion to approve. Application number two five dash zero one three eight five, second.
So it moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one three eight five for public hearing. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Here. Calling agenda item number thirty two, application number two six dash zero zero six three one, Sedexo America.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Justin Solusad, uh appearing on behalf of Sedexo America. Uh, this is for the Pride, I believe, October eighteenth, yeah, no changes.
Yeah. Wow, that's cutting it close.
Yeah, I know, I know, six weeks ago and I was like. No questions.
I'm just checking on the security measures.
Yes, it works, it's going back to pretty much our regular event concert, security plan we do there. We're not projecting anymore than three to thirty five hundred in there at any given time, it kind of flows in from the parade, so. The roamers or the undercover, you know, the plainclothes won't be activated for this one, but there will be roamers and stuff, so typical concert plan.
Right, I'll be there. See.
Any other question? Motion to prove application number two six dash zero zero six three one, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero six three one. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved, alright. Calling agenda item number thirty three, application number two six dash zero zero six three two by Sedexo America.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Justin Solusad, on behalf of Sedexo America, this is for the Hawaiian Airlines Appreciation Event. Um, it's a free event, there is no, um, well, the show is always open to the public, so ticket count. We're just projecting that, you know, fifty five hundred pretty much, full house, um which will activate the plainclothes. Uh, roamers, and yeah, pretty much typical plan we normally have.
Um, and I didn't know that this was a Hawaiian airline, so I will recuse myself of this.
Alright, so any other questions, Commissioners, or a form of action?
No questions.
Motion to prove application number two six dash zero zero six three two, second.
It's been moved and seconded to prove application number two six dash zero zero six three two, any objections or reservations seeing none. The Chair also votes I, application number two six dash zero zero six three two is approved.
Thank you very much.
Chair, on back, please, thank you.
One more, just.
One more.
Oh, okay.
Calling agenda item number thirty four, application number two six. Two six dash zero zero six five seven, Sedexo America LLC, hello.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Darlene Leonis, that's L E O N E S. Um, this is for Sedexo America at U H One Off, I'm the catering manager there. This is for the um, the last two home games.
Okay. No questions.
Alright, motion to prove application number two six dash zero zero six five seven, second.
So it moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero six five seven. If any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Thank you.
Both.
Calling agenda item number thirty five, request number two four dash zero one two four seven, H S I Honolulu Joint Venture Company.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, uh I'm Jirichi Kawa, um authorization representing H S I. Honolulu Joint Venture Company, um to my right is its Executive Director of Operations, Chris Cotto Hero. And we have no changes.
Questions?
I think we're good.
Motion to prove request number two four dash zero one two four seven, second.
So it moved and seconded to approve request number two four dash zero one two four seven, and it is a reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the request is approved.
Thank you for that.
Calling agenda item number thirty six, request number two five dash zero three four eight seven, M and S Limited.
Chair, I will recuse myself as work with the. CEO of Paul Sasa.
Alright, good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Paul Sasa, President, CEO of ABC SARS. Um, we are doing a massive renovation of our store after thirty five years. Big business, so our license is safekeeping at the moment.
Okay. Any questions?
So this is just an. Request to increase rate the space.
Right.
Because you're of the total renovation.
Because of the renovation, the, we made it store larger.
Okay. I have no other questions, thank.
Good. Motion to prove request number two five dash zero three four eight seven, second.
So it moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero four zero three four eight seven. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the request is approved.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number thirty seven, request number two six dash zero zero two two eight, Bahia, Fisher and Market, Waikiki.
Captain Chair, Vice Chairman of the Commission, bringing show of authorization, appearing behalf of the license fee and requesting party, should have received investigator's report. No changes there too. Basically, we can be sledgehammering the wall and making a hole there.
The council, you have a, the owners have a permit yet? Construction permit?
I I don't know, at this point, um.
Just to protect yourself against further complaints.
I I just, I can't answer that question, I I'm not privy to that information, I don't want to venture, I guess.
You guys stand accountable, yeah?
Yes. Actually, uh, well, they did submit the, uh, as indicated in the report, they did submit a. Check that, I'm sorry. I I can't answer that question, it's not, not privy to that. I'm assuming that they did, you know, the problem is with getting a contract, I think, if I recall right on this matter, the problem is getting a contractor in. On the, on the job.
Sorry, make the owners a precautionary note, but it shouldn't affect approval.
We'll take that, we'll take that comment to heart, Commissioner, pass it on to the licensee.
Motion to approve request number two six dash zero zero two two eight, second.
Then moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero two two eight, and he knows a reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the request.
You guys done?
Calling agenda item number thirty eight, request number two six dash zero zero six eight seven, the Burger Wing Hub.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Richard Belmonte, R I C H A R D. Belmonte Views Invictor V A L M O N T E, so co-owner, uh, Michelle, Michelle Zarate, M I C. E double L E, Z A R A T E, Zarate, also called, um, we're here just to. Uh, we're hosting an event at our burger place on the thirty first, and looking for uh an extension, a three hour extension on our liquor license. We have two parts of our restaurant, two spaces where it's gonna be twenty one and over, where our bars at, and. The other part will be the twenty one, obviously twenty and under, eighteen to twenty, and we have uh six securities. Um, licensed security, and we have a stanchion in the center with two securities monitoring each side, and two on the door. Because we have two doors, two entrances, and then two walking the floor on each side.
Okay, and so your, your special license uh was granted until nine p m and we're just.
Yes, uh, yes, we're just looking to just go to midnight, nothing crazy.
Good with that.
And just on that October thirty first.
Yeah, just October thirty first, yeah.
Motion to move request number two six dash zero zero six eight seven, second.
So it moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero six eight seven, any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the request is. Thank you. Uh, calling agenda item number thirty nine, request number two six.
Go back to twenty eight, twenty eight, if anybody's here.
Royal Village.
Royal Village.
Negatron.
Okay. We skip them. Can I have a motion on adoption of finding the facts and decisions of order, agenda items number forty through forty five?
Yes, this is Chair, motion to approve agenda items number, decision and orders number forty through forty five, second.
So it moved and seconded to approve agenda items number forty through forty five, decisions and orders, any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote I. Uh, the item, agenda items are approved. Um, calling agenda item number forty six, Administrator Weekly Report to the Commission.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Sal Patillos, Administrator Honolulu Liquor Commission, um. I'd like to begin by saying that, I guess when it rains, it pours, uh, we actually have.
The possibility of, I shouldn't say possibility, but we actually do expect to see subtle hires come into the the commission. Early November as well as, uh, that's for the administrative services section. Uh, branch, I mean, and and field service branch, we anticipate. Uh, we have four L C I one candidates going to suit of bill. I think those are very terrific numbers uh, for 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 the agency. Also want to let you know, uh. That we are switching over to the second vendor in terms of the body worn camera pilot program. Pretty pretty soon, uh, you know, I I think as you all know, we are going to be testing three different, the 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 products for three different vendors. Uh, in this in this pilot program. And so far, I think it's it's gone relatively well, I think it's been well, at at least for. Our investigators, it hasn't really caused any issues uh, so far, and 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 we'll keep watching out for that, whether or not it results in in concerns at all. Whether the use results in that concerns at all in part of our investors. I had the opportunity to provide the mayor of Banjariati with a uh, operational update on Monday. Uh, as part of our regularly scheduled meetings with the mayor's office, per se, monthly on a monthly basis. Additionally, I want to let you know that Council for H L C filed. The quarterly report with the US District for uh, for the Scarlet Settlement. And also that uh. Assistant Administrator, where I was able to hold a second stakeholder meeting on the on the bug rules. Uh, given the fact that the the quarterly report is has been filed, I also wanted to let you know about. Uh, about an aspect of that, which is the uh, the use of of uh. Randomized inspections for uh. For the first enforcement section, the the. It should be there.
While he's doing that, we'll do some questions.
Okay.
So how is the body worn camera pilot program going?
I think it's going relatively well, I think if you if you'd like, I could have uh, Chief Investigator Neri come.
I would like to.
If you would mind.
Hello, Chief.
Good, good evening, Commissioners, so for the most part, I I think that the. Pilot program for the body one camera has been very seamless with our investigators. Uh, so far, there's been no resistance from investigators, nor the public. I think that they've accepted uh, this type of change. And it's been very positive, I've been out there several times with the bottom one camera. It doesn't affect the way we provide our service or interact with our licensee or patrons. I believe that um. It just kind of promotes more transparency, what we need, so for the most part, I think it's uh, it's it's fine.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
So did I hear correctly that you're moving on to the second vendor?
Yes, so next week we'll have a training for investigators, we'll be in transition to the next vendor, which is the Wolf. So we'll.
Put it under the same procedures, policies, everything to so that.
Yes.
So I guess you get a good idea as a comparison between the vendors.
And before we actually deploy this uh, second vendor, we'll have a roundtable discussion with our investigators. And discuss about the pros and cons of the first vendor. And determine if there's any type of policy changes that we're going to have to move forward down the road, but at this point, this is going to be an open discussion. And so this is a pilot program, so I do expect uh. Of mistakes and corrections, but we are looking forward to it.
So I hope to volunteer for a ride along during one of the body worn camera.
Of course, yours is wonderful.
Get him suited up.
And um, and then perhaps. At the end of, I don't know, sometime in December, if you could give us a more. A full report on how the bother more cameras have. So just expect us to ask about it.
It would be good to hear the differences between the vendors and clients, yeah.
I was gonna say, I would like a probably a report in the end, after we've done all three vendors, which vendors have better pros or cons? Based on the investigators as well as administrative administration, so that we can all kind of have an idea, you know, which one might be best to use, right?
Of course, we can also look at it from just not from the user, also remember, we also have the. The actual technology internal or the public requests are 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 required, so we want to make sure that our our technical folks are able to. Able to utilize it very easily, so those are things that we're looking at, so it's it's we will evaluate the entire program from a holistic. Point and and ensuring that we do a full to back.
Video quality, yeah.
One of the things of the of the pilot, right, was that it wasn't going to be used um, in an adjudication hearing, that's correct.
That's correct.
But I think it would behoove us to have a trial. Use of the material as if we weren't in adjudicated here, so that we know what to expect.
Just 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 to put this in record. Uh, the recordings from the bottom one camera belongs to the vendor. So when the pilot program ends. They they are control of that, we are not in control of that, that's part of the agreement that we have with the vendors. So we yeah, we cannot release any video because they actually own it, because this is a pilot program.
Could we make. So I was going to say, I think what we should probably do is once we determine a final vendor. Because we are going to ultimately determine some form of vendor to use, I would assume. At that point, I do think we probably would want to see how video might look if we were to use it. In a adjudication form format.
And and I guess I would ask that um, of the remaining vendors that they should. Be willing to give us some of the uh, material because part of the. Of the pilot is to see how it goes from end to end, that end to end is part of it, will end up. Front of us and we should know what to expect.
Yeah, I would want to make a request to any other vendors. That although it's their property, they could share some of the videos, so we could look at the quality of. The video, the definition and color, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And and there are some requirements that I I believe, right, to. Blur people that aren't right. So just so that we know what to expect, so that it's not the first time that we see it is after we've selected a vendor.
I mean, just my experience with this fair first vendor, it the video is very clear quality, you could even hear the the audio. So so the fact that I I'm not familiar with the two other vendors will definitely look at that, that perspective, actually what works for us.
Okay. Good. Are we on our technology?
Um, are we?
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
So I think you're you're familiar with this with this form. The last time I I spoke about. In enforcement investigations, we had the opportunity to look uh, and see the difference between. One where uh, we did, we we were using the the. We we were we were scheduling uh. Investigations or inspections the way we normally did in the past, was relying on 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 memory of. Of the of of the team to to decide where to go. And there were major gaps in 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 in. In an investigation of those specific areas. Compared to the second half where there was much more coverage uh, of the of 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 the of the of the island. And also that uh. And and when when we finally got the just using the randomized application, randomization application itself, no. No repeat. No, no repeat investigation occurring with among certain purposes. That said, we know that we also need to make some changes in the way we we. Categorize certain inspections. And we're and we still have to go through that unless until we. We switch over to the applications being that's being developed by our vendor. Uh, but. So in the last three months, uh, you know, as you can, as you can see here, almost every district has been has been looked at except for one. Which is only has one license in that particular district, that may very be the be the function, in fact, there hasn't been six months since the last investigation. I think the good thing here is that when you look at this. You also see, I think when you look at the at the total inspections at the bottom there, you see somewhat smaller numbers and and declining numbers, but I think that that. As we as we spoke about this last month in 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 our field service branch meeting. It is likely the result of the fact that we've of absences in 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 enforcement. Not only not simply just simple absences, but the absences of more senior staff have been attacked as field service supervisor. Field supervisors, uh, and and so. With that, if 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 those if those particular individuals are missing, then that means the number of teams that go out declines. But that said. When you look at the at the total number of inspections, you're looking at about uh. About forty six percent of the uh, permanent licenses we are being inspected in three month period. Using that rate and and estimating outward, we would we would expect without any changes whatsoever, uh, we would expect that uh. Licenses licensees will be inspected one point eight times during this, during the during during the year. Which is, I think, pretty good.
That's a considerable improvement where people were never getting inspected.
Right, and never inspected, and 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 you'll see, and I think you'll see that, you'll you'll see that spread can continue that. Uh, hopefully that every zip code is visited, visited. Just let me say as well that. By the time, if if and when, when we move over to the new application, there'll be a change from zip codes to districts. Which is which is the normal way that 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 investigators, the the enforcement. Uh, category, the enforcement had data on on. Way back when we chat like that, at the at the at our efforts.
Districts are aligned with these districts?
Yes, yeah.
And do districts encompass or sometimes straddle zip codes? Okay.
So anyway, uh, so that that will be, that will be changed, and additionally, that will be spoken about, maybe change uh, uh, being more granular and 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 identifying more. Inspections, like for example, the after hours inspections would be different, the shoulder taps will will be different as well, that will be a different category as well. Doug, if you don't mind, the the next slide, please. Uh, I think this was something that was of concern to uh. Commissioner Sakamoto, uh, but now it shows that, you know, these are these are places that are generating their specific licenses and and. These are the investigations that were conducted. That were conducted in 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 the in the three, in the previous three months. Uh, I think the the team tries to make sure that they go out. Immediately after they receive uh, they receive complaints. Sometimes they don't go out immediately simply because of the complexity of the of the complaints that. Uh, but. But at least I think it shows that when when the complaints are here, then we will go, the the teams will go out and and investigate. Uh, you probably see some concentration specific uh, district zip codes, so probably things like Waikiki and and maybe Chinatown as well. Next, Doug.
Skip.
And 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 just another category that that we look at, warning follow up investigations, like it's some, somebody receives a warning typically. That that results in 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 a in another visit uh, a couple of weeks later. So that, you know, and when you look at this, you you can see. Uh, if there are warnings issued, whether or not to we we visit them again, and and so hopefully. Uh, this provides a better picture of the entire enforcement effort. Uh, there there are other categories and and I didn't want to, I didn't want to just go throughout the the whole gamut of of categories that we had, but. Now, things like uh, service of of legal papers and I don't need subpoenas, those kinds of things are also included, are are part of the part and parcel of their responsibilities and duties. Uh, but for this, I just wanted to know, let you know what 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 enforcement had done in the in the in the in the three months. Since the last time I I I reported the report and to you as well. And my hope, and I I plan to have licensing data for the for the first quarter. On the thirtieth. That's great.
This is good. I think it strides, I. I think what we try to work toward, how I think about it is, each licensee at some way kind of has a risk rating. That the banker had in the end, if they have claims or they have. Been assessed penalties. That they would be visited more often versus someone who's had a clear record, kind of like how you pay your driver's insurance, right? And then you you might visit base kind of on that categories.
Those are FICO's.
We're getting like a mortgage, like a mortgage application.
Mortgage risk, yeah.
Now, this is really good, I I I'm thinking, and I haven't talked with my fellow commissioners on this, but. Maybe we always designate one day's report just for investigation and one day's report just for licensing. And we kind of go through the numbers of the data, and then we'll ask you questions on it, so that, you know, we can. Constantly make sure that on a monthly basis, we're looking at these numbers.
Uh, I think I think we we will, we will be able to. Data is being given to me on tomorrow, I mean, on a on a regular basis at this point.
But I just mean we calendar the. First meeting of the month, it's always going to be investigation, okay, and the second one will be uh, licensing.
Yeah, I just like to have the opportunity to to. I I asked for the data after the month end, so I want to make sure that I have data.
I would recommend the second and third meetings of the month. You like the second. And then the third.
That way, we can we can have the information for you, and 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 we 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 take snapshots at the end of each month. Uh, and hopefully what what we'll show as we move forward is that is build that information throughout the year.
But I think part of having just a regular cycle of of reporting, especially for this time that we have with you, is important. We should really take it.
Yeah, I I I think the data, uh, or at least looking at the data will allow you to see what the operations are like. And see whether or not there are there are there are areas in which we need to improve. And that that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to look to, to glean from from the data that we will that we look at. Uh, but being able to to have that information on hand on a regular basis, I think is is really helpful and also. Especially with with investigator there near, you can drill down a little bit more, supposed to be making observations on 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 the on the on the data, that's that's massive.
And and how is our migration from the old system to the new system going?
Uh, I think with that, I will have uh, Mr. O respond to that, cautious.
Before the response. So the data that you're reporting is what you pull out from the database that's inputted by licensee and investigator.
So yeah, so it so it's reliant on what's what's put into uh, LCIS.
Garbage in, garbage out.
Oh, you know, I I think that may, you know, we're trying to move away from that particular thinking. I think we were making efforts to make sure the data is correct. Uh, and and you know, at some point in time, we need to rely on one source of truth, and that is LCIS.
But there's kind of three, there's LCIS one.
Arcs, LCIS one, and LCIS two.
So that one is kind of garbage that we need to migrate from.
It's just an expression, because let's say if. What is the timetable for enforcement to input all their investigations and information and complaints? As well as say licensing, how many applications, what is the window that they have to get it in by? Before you can draw it out to say, this is accurate.
I I think with that, I I, when you look at it, if with license. No, I I think with that, uh uh when you look at it, if with licensing, as soon as it's submitted, there's a sub- submission date. Uh as soon as this uh and and one of the things that we're trying to make sure, uh what we're trying to get with the enhancements is that. We are, we are aware of the distinct points in which. Applications are are go through, so for example, it's submission, right? If the data gets here and and everything, uh preliminary review uh by what? By by what the licensing clerks, if there are issues, and the uh also review by. By the supervising investigator to look at it before it's assigned. And once it's assigned, then we can begin to see whether how long it takes to complete that particular report. Uh I think, you know, there there are, at this point, there are some limitations to the to the to the data and and. And and we're trying to improve the systems, we can, we can, we can have distinct. Periods that we can look at and see where things are going awry or going wrong.
Yeah, and that's my point is just knowing what kind of windows we're looking at between. And how accurate that data is by the time you you pull it, you know.
Yeah, I think in terms of accurate of data, in that accuracy of data, it really becomes a question of. You know, of information that's being embedded by investigators. Uh you know, whether that's via comments or whatever, I think, uh I can look at something and if there are no comments of saying what's going on. Uh I'll I can look at something if there are comments saying, hey, I contacted X Y's uh X on such and such today. Uh this, we can see that, but I think we also need to be very consistent in in in. Inputting that information, uh I I know that we are all that that. The investigators are 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 busy, but the fact of the matter is to ensure that we have. Data accuracy and data that we can rely on, and not just us, but everybody in mind. It really, it it it's really incumbent upon all of us to make sure that. We do our part in but in in providing information within the system, so that when somebody looks at it. You know, uh yeah, they can see exactly what's going on within.
I'm just looking at it as far as, you know, the investigator or staff is receiving something that. The input into the. Into the data space can also generate documents or generate reports. So that it's almost like lifetime kind of thing.
Uh I I think it, I I think that 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 may be a a future state. Re- real time data is, uh you know, uh would would be would be great, and. And I think I I've I I've spoken about my desire to have real time data ad nauseam, uh but. Uh that is, that eventually will be the future state, uh you know, at some point in time. There's gonna be a query that's that's created that will allow whoever it is, whether it's me or somebody else to say. Hey, what's going on system wide, can we go like on a specific app application? Uh I mean, I can, it can be done now, but it requires. Uh it it requires a lot of effort on the part of several people to get that information to me.
Because the only reason I bring it up is, once upon a time when L C I S was first being conceived, the initial versions was so that. Licensees and licensed app uh applicant applicants could actually look into the system to see the status. Of their reports and uh their application and so forth. And that, like I said, was the original intent, so it's just, I'm just wondering, since it's been a few years. Where we are in that what in the this phase of L C I S development.
I think they, I think they have access to L C I S, and again, question becomes how 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 good is the information there? Uh and 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 to be honest with you. I think uh I think consistent use and consistent entry of of information is is critical to to knowing exactly what's going on. Particular application. So I think there's some things that we need to do as an agency to make sure that that information is out there. Um and 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 so that's that's something that we that we really do need to work on.
Okay, thank you.
No questions.
Right, we, I think you had a question about migration, yes.
I'm delegating.
All right.
Doug's in touch with our vendor.
Uh Douglas, so special projects coordinator for the Honolulu Liquor Commission, so Chair, you asked about migration, so we're looking to migrate the. Uh enforcement data, uh sometime this year, uh we're looking hopefully by the end of this calendar year. Now, just for uh everyone's knowledge, we do plan to keep our original legacy system. As an archive to review old data uh that we have stored, so this is stored inside the city's network, so it is a secured. Um access point where no one can um get to it except only internal city employees, well, liquor commission employees.
Okay, so there's a migration to the L C I S two side and then. The longer term new development.
Correct, from the uh our new uh system will be migrating to the cloud, will be the next.
And that had more real time clearing ability.
We are able to generate um real time reports um quicker. Currently, right now, we can take a snapshot in time, it takes a little um effort on the part of the staff to generate the uh reports and numbers.
So basically, I'm the data gas line. But um I think, you know, uh and and just to, I I again, just to clarify. Or to inform you, set the fact that the change in scope of of the contract is. It's going through that process and and that 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 plays into estimates as to when things can happen. This is the most.
Right. Any other questions? Hey, then uh agenda item number forty seven announcements.
They conference next week, so no meeting.
Uh so no meeting next week, Thursday.
Yeah, can you gavel a sound?